Agenda item 16, Discussion and Possible Direction to Staff Regarding the Second Phase of the 2011 Rate Increase of 4.5 percent by Overton Power District. I've asked Ms. Hunt, can you do that before? We are going to have public comment here, but I want Ms. Hunt to go through some information before we go there. Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I just wanted to explain to the public that Overton Power District is a separate government entity. Therefore, the city doesn't have any jurisdiction over OPD. The council can hear public comment, but they don't have jurisdiction. The council can direct staff to contact OPD with what the council wishes if they feel it is affecting businesses, but the council really doesn't have jurisdiction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. Councilman Withholder, would you want to hold until we do public comment at this point? Go ahead.
I'd like to just have Ms. Hunt back up. You indicated that Overton Power District was a governmental agency?
They are a separate agency, yes. They are controlled by the public utilities.
PUC?
Yes. So the city doesn't have any jurisdiction.
But are they indeed a governmental agency?
Ah, they're quasi.
Okay, well, I think that should be identified.
Yeah. I'm sorry if I said it so it was misunderstood.
Thank you. With that being said, we'll go ahead and open up the public comment of this portion on Agenda Item 16. Please step forward, state your name, where you're from, and remember, we do have a three-minute limit.
My name is Barbara Ellis-Stat. I'm Mesquite Citizen, Toronto. To clarify one of the points that Councilwoman Withholder just asked, through all my research, they are a general improvement district as their governing entity. Over the last year, I have been very proud of my elected officials on the City of Mesquite, City Council, and the Virgin Valley Water District, and the staff employees of both organizations for trying harder to find ways to save my dollars than they did trying to find ways to spend them. I strongly encourage my elected officials at the Overton Power District to do the same and not allow the impending rate hike to take effect. It is another impediment to economic development in the region and specifically in the City of Mesquite. There are alternative solutions to the dilemma that they find us in. All those choices may not be as obvious. I hope they take the time and effort to explore those solutions and not take the easy route that will ultimately end up hurting all of us. I also hope that they fulfill their moral obligation to hold a public hearing in Mesquite with all board members in attendance, and I appreciate the City Council taking the time to hear the citizens of Mesquite in this situation. Thank you.
David Ballwick, citizen of Mesquite. I've attended a couple of the OPD meetings, and I just want this council to please send a message to OPD that please have a public hearing. If you look at some of the stuff that they passed out before this last hearing, they've been published as backup material here. Some of their models are questionable. Some of their conclusions I couldn't substantiate in the prices by going to Nevada Power. They make claim that in their presentation that they're trying to level out the cost of service to different entities, and OPD is not regulated by a PUD like Nevada Power is. So Nevada Power, for many, many years, has been regulated by a PUD with considerable number of public hearings to establish some type of level cost of service to residential, different commercial rates. And if you look at the comparisons, one thing that's clear that it's very much skewed in OPD's charges to the bigger users. So demand rates are higher. Some of their demand rates don't really, in my mind, it doesn't follow my model of demand ratings. It appears to be presented as showing the impact lesser than it really is. We're going to have, there's probably some other people speaking, but the city's going to see a major increase in price. The water district's going to see a major decrease in price, but I would hope that you please send a message to them because we're going to see where actually the heavy users in Mesquite are going to pay higher than Nevada Power's power rates for power usages. So I think there needs to be some really big discussions about the cost of service and how to share all the cost of delivering energy to the valley. Thank you.
I'm Anne Miranda, Executive Director of the Mesquite Chamber of Commerce. We feel the same way. We applaud you for putting this on the agenda so quickly after what happened at the OPD Power Board meeting. This is going to impact our businesses here, and in these economic times, we can't afford that. So please, voice your opinion to them. A public forum would be wonderful so that we could hear what they have to say and the reasonings behind it. Barbara's article was awesome. It had a lot of details in there that the public needs to know about, and we need to get some answers from them. So please, encourage them to have that public forum, whatever you can do to help us and our businesses here. Thank you.
Mayor, Michelle Burkett, 1127 Lakeview Drive. And I have also briefly tried to update myself on this information. I have some concerns about what a public open house might bring for us, that I encourage that when we talk about a quasi-government entity. I really don't know what that means for us. In a larger sense, I worked and lived in Salt Lake City, and we kind of sort of understand what Public Utility Commission means. There's a board, they deliberate, they try to do the best things. In this case, I'm not sure exactly what the rate increase, you're apparently weighing in on it, but what does that mean for me? It's automatically going to happen, or do I have a voice? Years ago, I had an opportunity to look at some power considerations, and there are some other things coming down the pike that you might not have thought about. When you deliver power, you have a power purchase agreement, and if I recall correctly, our power purchase agreements, we have had the luxury of having an extraordinary low power rates, unbelievably low. And those purchase agreements that deliver that power at a low rate are going to expire at some time, and it's my personal opinion that you won't be able to replace them. So if you can deliver a kilowatt of power for seven and a half cents now, and it expires, you're going to have not a questionable rate increase, but one that is imperatively, it's going to have to be replaced by a new contract. What that new contract would be, 11 cents, 13 cents, I'm not sure, but if you're looking at a rate increase now that is to support, if the article was correct, thank you for your article, if it was to maintain a debt that, if I read it correctly, was lengthened from a period of time, that debt load should be less. So to me, it did not look automatically like there should be a rate increase. So I encourage an open house. I encourage a lot of study on this. I don't know what it is to have a quasi-governmental entity say, hey, there's a rate increase. I don't know what we can question about it, but I encourage everyone at home and in the audience, as citizens, this is what we do. Tonight, the council and the city and the staff has looked at some incredibly important issues. We've looked at water, roads, and now we're talking about electricity. And in the future, the city will be competing against other, maybe even newer cities, Coyote Springs, who just recently announced a power project that would be alternative, and they're going to bring in, they estimate, they hope, 465,000 houses. If you can't compete in that era, then Mesquite will be not as attractive. So on many avenues, I'm asking the city support an open house, and I'm asking that citizens get involved and ask what happens with our water and our electricity and our roads. Thank you.
Lex Hall, Mesquite Gaming, resident of Mesquite for 22 years. As you know, we were just over a year ago seeking license approval in our emergence from Chapter 11 bankruptcy. These continue to be tough times. With that being said, Mesquite Gaming's electrical costs run $2.5 million to $2.6 million a year. A 4.5 to 5 percent increase from Overton Power will result in an increase of 115,000 to 130,000 annually. We face problems anytime rates fees are increased. We cannot pass these costs onto our customers with a continued soft market, and yet we cannot continue to absorb the burden either. Therefore, this fee increase will result directly in a decline in operating margins and reduce investment capital, which indirectly impacts our ability to drive attention to Mesquite area inn, attract customers. And the other points, any increases, especially at this time, affects everyone, especially those families that are trying to leave their monthly bills, especially in these times. And on a business side, this increase, total increase for Overton Power, would affect Mesquite Gaming 10 percent of the total, which I know it sounds, 10 percent is a huge cost to one business. And I guess that's it. Thank you.
Ted Miller, Mesquite, Nevada. I'm also on the Virgin Valley Water District. Would like to remind Overton Power that one of our biggest expenses is power, and the district has a huge, a very large debt load, and we have to be extremely frugal for the next few years to be able to make the payments on those bonds. We would have no choice, but we would have to pass any rate increases they pass on to us. We'd have to pass on to our rate over, other than less.
Crescent Party, 660 Virgin Street. I want to put my business hat on first and discuss with you, one of your biggest economic benefits in this community, along with gaming, is golf industry. The golf industry, just the Falcon Ridge itself, is probably close to 120-plus thousand a year in power usage. And as you all well know, that golf course has not made money since its inception. It's a very difficult thing to do, but any rate increase on power, just like Mr. Miller spoke, is going to increase water, which is, we're one of the least water users in this community, and golf courses are going to be able to lease on grass. So those rates, it's a double impact, and I know this, just like Barbara said, we'd like to see some kind of forum here, an explanation. And putting my legislative hat on, last session, it was a very difficult session, but as legislators, we did something that hasn't been done before. We decreased the budget by over half a billion dollars in the state of Nevada, and I would hope that Overton Power is doing the same, to look at every avenue they can to reach their cost output to the citizens of Mesquite and the Miami Valley. So, thank you for your time.
Andre Carrier, Eureka Casino Resort. First of all, thanks for hearing us. You know, it's actually exciting to see what a group of active citizens can do in such a short period of time, because it's clear that the citizens here have the foresight to know what the implications of this could be. I'm not going to repeat what everybody said. We're clearly in the same situation, like Lex said directly, ours, not surprisingly, about half their two properties, about a million dollars. I equate that into jobs. If we think about jobs that get paid 10 to 15 dollars an hour, those are between two and four jobs a year that the increase would affect our business potentially. Clearly, in this situation, we're looking for stability in employment, and we're looking for reinvestment rate in order to compel economic growth. It's an impediment to it. We do everything we can to affect jobs last. We maximize our reinvestment through capital improvements to increase visitation. My comment, my good friend and colleague got it right. If you can compel a meeting, and we can compel an audience that communicates our hopes that they have done everything on the cost side to be lean and meaningful, then the cost structure may not have to grow at 4 percent. So let's use our community's efforts to compel them to follow the lead of the folks that have come before me, to find every possible area before we pass along an increase that we are unable to find revenue gains to offset. So great forum tonight, great act of citizenship, happy to be among you. Thanks for the time.
Jim Carrick, and I'm a Mesquite resident, but more importantly, I'm very involved with Mesquite Veterans Center. We have a different dilemma. The Mesquite Veterans Center does an awful lot for the veterans and their families of this community, but we rely on the community and the businesses in order for us to continue to do what we do. We give back to the community just as they give to us. This increase, as you heard these gentlemen in the gaming industry and the large businesses in Mesquite, is going to hurt them, and it's going to limit what they can do for our Veterans Center. You're talking about our brothers and sisters who put their butt on the line to defend this country, and we want to continue to help them as much as we can. We cannot let this happen. Thank you.
I'd really like to thank you for allowing this time, because I attended the meeting a year ago for their rate increase and was not even acknowledged. But anyway, thanks for the article. I am just a citizen, so when I saw this today, when I got back from a trip, I noticed that first of all, it's going to be a trickle-down effect. We have the city, that you're going to have to pass that on to us as a citizen, and then I'm an avid participant at the REC Center. Well, it says right in the paper that those fees will go up at least $9,000. Whether we can continue as senior citizens or anyone to, excuse me, go to the REC Center and absorb increases, I don't know. I think our biggest mistake, well, first of all, someone, when this came up once before, someone said there's another power company out there. Don't know if there is or not, but it'd be worth pursuing. But I think where we've really been lax is to allow these same board members to be on the board for however many years, forever, and haven't had other people run who might have some other aspects on this. It's my understanding from the article, there's only 52 employees, and the amount of money they make is quite advanced. That's my comment. Thank you. Just a person, a citizen.
I'm Jay Talber, and I'm a 64-year resident of Mesquite, and I too would like to thank Mesquite citizens for all their effort. One comment, I've talked to some of the board members before. I think it would be nice if they would have one of their board meetings over here in the Mesquite area, since we're the biggest user. I don't know if you guys can put any pressure on them. I've talked to a couple of them, and they just kind of ignore you. Anyway, you know, we can drive car over there, but it'd be nice if they'd switch back and forth a little bit. I do think we, you know, as a city, what if we got going for us? We're going to tell everybody we've got the most expensive power, the most expensive water, we're going to have the most expensive taxes? How are you going to get people to come here? Anyway, that's my two bits.
Dennis Lynch, I'm a Mesquite citizen, and I'm the president of the Vietnam Veterans of America, and I represent the 106 dues-paying members, but I'm concerned about the thousands of veterans that are in the area. Many are on fixed incomes, and the incomes are not going up, but all of our expenses seem to go up dramatically, like gasoline. What none of you want to see is a homeless veteran. Well, one way that this, you could make a homeless veteran, is you take his last disposable dollar out of his income stream and suck it out into fixed income, like utilities. And to prevent that, I would like to see this council lockstep against any rate increase in power. Thank you very much.
Doug Reed, citizen of Mesquite. I'm actually here representing Cali Village Shopping Center, and we've got tenants that are just barely hanging on, and any type of increase is going to severely impact them. As you know, retail is real tough in town. So I don't know if there's any alternative power companies. As mentioned, Dixie Escalante, I think went into Beaver Dam Little Field District, and staff could look into that. Maybe that's what we need to do, is start looking at alternatives. I know we've had great rates for a long time, but apparently the ball's been dropped, and there've been some mismanagements, and I think we ought to look at all alternatives. And I'm going to apply for their president job, because apparently it makes more than the President of the United States. There you go.
Firstly, I oppose any of the rate hikes in the way it was proposed.
I'm sorry, would you, sir? Would you repeat your name again for me, please?
My name is Doug Walfer, White Ford. But I know from hearing here and what I read, that our council's leadership and their own belt tightening may not be applicable to this new proposal. So is there anything that the council may do to resolve this through a recommendation to the power company or any change? That would be what I would consider, because I oppose this proposal until they can demonstrate some belt tightening of their own and make the increase, if it's necessary, even across the board, because it seems it's weighted against our big businesses in town, which I've come to the conclusion that it's a very desirable place to live here. One of the reasons is the casinos keep the cost of living down. Where else can you go and buy a $2.99 breakfast? And that puts pressure on all of the restaurants to do the same. So I was wondering if anything that our good mayor and council could do to recommend to the Overton Power District a similar resolution? Thank you.
Sorry, Mayor, I'd like to throw a little more field on fire in a different direction. People that may not know, the Overton Power District, I think it'd be to defend them just a little bit, they are not a manufacturer of power. They solely purchase power from other entities. And sometime back in early 2000, our state legislature mandated that this state have to use, I think it was somewhere between 20 and 28 percent of green energy between, before the current time right now, which NV Energy has beat that. But please understand, when you have green energy, it's anywhere between 12 and 18 cents a kilowatt. Gas, coal, somewhere between 4 and 6. So Overton Power has to purchase that power from other entities. They've done something that most people don't understand. We have an allotment from the Hoover Dam through Overton Power. They buy the power at a cheaper rate, sell it down the river to California, which in turn, they turn it back to us to keep our rates low. As we begin to purchase, I hope somebody will stand up and correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what's been done in the past, is kept our rates lower. Just got to let you know where at right now, from the Overton Power side, we need to be really concerned. There was a business that is actively looking to come here. They found out that southern Nevada is substantially higher per kilowatt than northern Nevada, so they're moving their business to northern Nevada instead of coming here to Mesquite, which they were looking at. They might have a satellite office here. Those kind of effects are going to continue to happen, and so here's my part that I am advocating. I think we need to repeal that mandate until things get better in the state. I know that everybody wants to look towards green, but if you're going to pay for that price of green energy, if you're going to continue forward this way. So I am working, as one of my legislative bills, to repeal that until such time the state of Nevada gets back its economic legs, and it hopefully will help somewhere down there. Thank you.
My name's Kent Harper, Mesquite resident. Formerly, I lived in White Plains County. I mention that because the power there also is provided by an entity that's not under the supervision of the PUC. Only there, it's a co-op. 15 years ago, we had a lot of problem with our co-op board, which was elected, but they were taking and making decisions behind closed doors in their executive sessions, in fact, the rate payers. So we went to the legislature, and when they came under the threat of the law being changed so that they would be placed under the authority of the PUC, suddenly they became a lot more transparent. I don't know what the laws are considering the general improvement districts, but I suspect the Nevada legislature would have the authority to place them under PUC governance if necessary. Might be something to look into. That is something that the council sort of avoids, might have some influence as well as the people. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment. Councilman Rapsin, you have your light on.
Yeah, since I'm a co-sponsor with Councilman Hayes, I might as well open this thing up. First of all, thanks for the public comment. I mean, there's some awesome ideas thrown out there. Your last one was, that seems to be one of the biggest problems, was transparency. And I'm going to read you something. This is the background. I think it's important. You've got it in your packets if you're looking at it. It's first paragraph is about the rate increases. Second paragraph, "At the meeting, three Mesquite residents requested that OPD delay the rate hike pending a public hearing where residents and business owners could ask questions about the increase. Dave Anderson, Mesquite representative on the board, said the following: 'Staff makes themselves available to answer all those questions and meet with groups, whatever it takes to answer those questions. We've done it in the past, and it's always helped.' I just want to make everyone aware of that." And then Delmar Latham stated the item was brought before the OPD board. Educate them on the need for the rate increase, explain why, where they are financially, and then allow the board members and the public a month to consider the numbers. This is probably the most disingenuous comment I've ever heard. I mean, this is, they have not called for public comment. They are not providing public comment. The financial statements that I got in this packet are a month-to-month comparison of July to June to July, which tells you nothing. There's no comment about how they got into this situation, where they need a rate hike. Were there bad decisions by management? God knows they're paid enough. Have we made bad purchasing decisions? Have they spent on CapEx and have borrowed for CapEx that was not needed or overbuilt? I understand they have a great office. A lot of questions need to be answered. Why? And further, what other business can just say, hey, I'm struggling, I'm going to jack my prices by 5 percent and make it up? No business does that. A responsible business operator- A responsible business operator tries to live within the means of their income, not just because they can, stick it to the consumer. If the gaming industry here said, you know what, we're having problems, I'm going to jack my hotel rooms up 5%, my food up 5%, what are they going to do? They're going to lose customers. But we don't have that ability. We can't just walk away from the power. So I find it absolutely offensive. I've asked a lot of people how they felt about OPD in general. Comments? Common. Closed, basically meaning not open and transparent. Backroom deals. Incestuous. Overpaid personnel. Building monuments to themselves. Not forthcoming with requested information, documents, agenda backup, financial statements. No accountability. I just, I, I think there has to be some public comment. They have to be held accountable. They have to answer questions, and they have to answer real questions with real answers. And they need it by the public, the users, and yeah, I agree with everybody that spoke. This is bad for business, it's bad for the citizens, it's bad for Mesquite.
Councilman Littman.
Let me make a comment. I don't know if everybody has this, this sheet in their packet, which states, quote, "This rate increase does not affect the small businesses or your customers." This is absolutely faulty reasoning, okay? When you take money away from a homeowner who goes to a small business, he's going to spend, or she's going to spend less money because there's less money available, obviously, that's going to a power bill. So the ability to support a small business inasmuch as the small business is also owned by an individual who is paying individual increases of 4.5% as proposed, you can see where this is going. It's a trickle-down that seems to affect everybody. So I think Overton Power needs to go back and look at their, at their total reasoning as to how they do this, because individuals are the small business owners in Mesquite. Thank you.
Councilman Gus Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one comment, and that is, I'd like to remind the power company that the city has done everything they humanly can do to try to keep, help you keep your rates down so you wouldn't be in this position. And what I'm speaking about is specifically about every time you need a substation or you need additional land, when the city has owned land, and this goes back for a long period of time, that land has been deeded over to you at no cost to the power district. It is a cost to the ratepayers indirectly, because that land belonged to the ratepayers in the first place. So I think the city has certainly done their part, everything we can do legally to try to help you keep your rates down. I think that needs to be taken into consideration too. I know that it would be easy to say, well, if you didn't do that, then we wouldn't build the infrastructure. Well, if you didn't build the infrastructure, you'd have more debt probably right now, because you wouldn't have the customers. So, just something to think about.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Withelder.
Thank you, Your Honor. We've heard from private citizens, we've heard in the gaming industry, we've heard from various assortment of people. I'd like to, Rob, would you mind standing up? Mr. Fuller? We've addressed almost every issue, but we haven't addressed what this could adversely do to the hospital. Can you address that in some fashion? Because I think that's an area that has not been addressed, and I'm sure it's going to be pretty worrying.
Thank you, Councilman Withelder. Yes, I can say that would be a significant financial impact to healthcare as well. As has been said, we can't just raise rates when costs go up, because our rates are set by the government, basically. So it's a business that's important to this community and supports all of the other businesses as well, but definitely in the $25,000 to $35,000 range for one year would impact both significantly.
And that could, in a, affect the patient care in some, in some fashion with, I mean, it's, it's not cut and dried, but...
It's like any other business, and Mesquite's fortunate enough to have a hospital that doesn't cost them tax dollars to support it. It's a business that's here to help the community, so it would have an impact.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Rapsin.
Can I ask a crowd, is there a board member from OPD here? Raise your hand. That kind of speaks to the, to the absolute lack of caring what anybody has to say about their business. That speaks volumes.
Councilman Haven.
Well, first of all, I appreciate staff for getting this on. I appreciate the citizens, they came and asked if we could put it on. I think you understand that we listen, and we try to do what you're asking us to do. You wrote us in your, your direction. I need to let Overton Power, the employees understand, this isn't, this isn't about the employees. This is about management and the board, and the past decisions. The method of decision-making in the past by elected officials and management has to stop. Past decisions by the OPD, VWD, and the city have cost, and are costing each of us millions. We must do better. We need to learn from this as well. Decisions that were made seven years ago, eight years ago, six years ago, here it comes to roost today. I just have a few questions, and I would hope that, as the minister reflected, the board would come and present the information to the city. It's been mentioned that it rate increases even across the board. I, I'm opposed to rate increases. I've been paying attention to this. If you remember, a few months ago, I put the issue of the right-of-way fee on 3% that you pay to the city. I'm trying to give that back. A half a percent of that 3% for the next six years. The, the slide that Councilman Littman's held up. The rate increase does not affect small business or irrigation customers. They're not going to see the, the 4% or 5% increase. Now, let me explain something. Irrigation users, and I'm not talking about golf courses, I don't think they're included in this, and that's why I'd like some clarification, but I can tell you that the irrigation users in Mesquite and Bunkerville do not have any power meters. Zero. It affects the other valley. There just needs to be consistent direction, and I think there needs to be some questions answered. Once again, I appreciate the attendance. That's what this is all about. Let's just have it explained. Come answer, have them answer the questions, and let's do what we need to do. We do have to be considered. More businesses leave, more residents leave, more problem.
Any further comments from council or questions from council? Councilman Rapsin.
There are no further questions. I'd like to, to make a motion.
Please do, sir.
Well, I haven't formulated this thing clearly yet, so bear with me here. I'd like to direct staff to request OPD, vigorously request OPD, to have a public presentation with clear explanations and justification for the rate increases in Mesquite and...
Say. We have a motion and a second by Councilman Haven. Any discussion on the motion? All right, sing now, we'll call for a vote.